arrived, so it's 5:01 and we'll go ahead and start this meeting. Could we please have our roll call? Mayor Protem, Mayor Beck, and Mayor Ford, here. Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Loa.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Now, the county.
Here.
We have a forum. Okay. Austin, would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, say I will accept?
With pleasure.
Okay.
Please rise. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And before we get too far along, I just wanted to announce that tonight I will be adjourned in this meeting in the name and honor of Vincent Dino, and at the end I'll have a little biography about him and the things that he's done for our city, and then we'll adjourn the meeting at the end in his name. Just wanted to give him that. And now I think we have a huge printer video. I hope you all enjoyed that video, and if you've come here before, you may have noticed we have a new screen up, it's not in four sections anymore, it's one big solid screen, so our videos will look much better now. All right, City Clerk, can we please have you acknowledge the observances for the month of August?
The City of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: National Night Out, August 5th, Senior Citizens Day, August 21st, and Women's Equality Day, August 26th.
Thank you, and if you came in, you probably saw the activity out in the park across from us, that is for National Night Out. I hope after the meeting you guys have a chance to go out there and stroll around and meet some of our partners out there, law enforcement, fire, search and rescue, they all do great work for the City of Palmdale, so please go out and say hello and make them part of your service. All right, moving on to item number four, we have recognition of Lockheed Martin's 70th anniversary of the U-2 program. So I think we're gonna show video first. All right, let's start from the back. Well, look at our lovely screen.
What is it like to put on the suit and fly above 70? If you haven't seen a U-2 integration, it's probably gonna look a little weird to you. We walk out to the integration room, and we sit there, and our life support troops, they will literally get us dressed. The suit is pretty thick, it's very bulky, so it's hard to get in by yourself. The first real mental snapshot I had back in the day was that first high flight, the first time I closed down on the helmet, and that's a big deal because you can't even scratch your face if you get an itch. You are literally in your own little world, you're hearing yourself breathe, you see your reflection just in front of your face, and you realize, this is where I'm gonna live, and this is what I'm gonna see for the next X amount of hours competing on with the missionaries, and you have to be able to cope with that. And then you're climbing away, and you watch the altimeter, and it's just racing up. Before you know it, boom, you're above 70,000 feet, and depending on what time of day you're flying, if you're at or near sunrise or sunset, you'll see what's called the terminator line, which is the separation of day and night. So you go from day to this beautiful purple haze to just this, the darkest black you've ever seen. It's like none other, and you definitely realize how small you are, and what small part you are on Earth, and how big our planet actually is.
Okay, now I'd like to call up your Kim, Fred, Scott, Eats.
Eats.
Eats, sorry, I apologize. Vice President of Operations at Skunk Works, Michael Fox, Director, Michael Cam Edwards, Deputy Director, and Tony Take Aponte, and he is a U-2 pilot that you just saw on the screen. So I'm gonna come down, and we're gonna give you guys a proclamation, and we're gonna declare tonight U-2 Day. And then you guys can talk. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? All right. So if you will face the audience. I'm gonna stand a little bit, I'm gonna read this to you. In the middle. Okay, this is a combination from the City of Palmdale, I'm gonna read it, there's a lot of whereas's, but you guys did a lot, so we have a lot to talk about. It says, whereas Lockheed Martin Skunk Works marks 70 years since the U-2 first flight in August of 1955, celebrating its legacy as an iconic symbol of American ingenuity and innovation. And whereas, built in complete secrecy by Kelly Johnson and the Lockheed Skunk Works team, the original U-2 As, early flights over the Soviet Union in the late 1950s provided the president and other United States decision makers with key intelligence on Soviet Union's military capabilities. And whereas, production of today's U-2 S fleet was completed in the late 1980s and continues to deliver unparalleled performance to support your armed forces mission. And whereas, the U-2 is the most capable and reliable high-altitude intelligence surveillance and reconnaissance platform flying today, piloted or unpiloted. And whereas, a highly capable defense suite enables the U-2 to survive sneak attacks, remain engaged during rapidly escalating hostilities, or continuous mission during times when the presence of a threat is known or suspected but not yet located. And whereas, the U-2 has provided intelligence during operations in Korea, the Balkans, Afghanistan, and Iraq. Now therefore, I, Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this combination to Lockheed Martin Skunk Works for the occasion of the 70th anniversary of the first flight of the U-2. I also do declare, on behalf of the Palmdale City Council, the 5th day of August 2025 as Lockheed Martin Skunk Works U-2 Day. Who would like to speak? We could pass along.
We could pass along. Well, Mayor Protem, and the Council, thank you very much. It's certainly an honor to be here to mark the 70th anniversary of such a legendary aircraft in aviation history. You know, as you mentioned in the citation there, that since the Cold War to today, in fact, as we sit here today, the U-2 has answered the call time and time again, delivering quality decision intelligence, not only for our commanders, our policymakers, and the warfighter. And as we go forward, I think we reflect with pride, and we kind of look at this partnership with the city, I think we're confident that the U-2 is gonna do well and fly forever, so.
Mike, do you want to say that?
Just, you know, thanks Scott, and you know, I wanna just say thank you to the City of Palmdale. You have provided us with the most capable workforce that we can ever imagine. We really could not do it without the people of Palmdale either supporting us, working on the aircraft, you know, no matter what it is, or what we ask, you always come through, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just like that, what Mike said, thank you so much, man, thank you, the city, it is about the people. So that's what we celebrated this week, got some of our people here, and what we do on a day-to-day basis provides protection for the US every single day, so. And again, thank you for everything, thanks for the support, and I don't know, along with thanking you for the workforce and the people, also thank you for allowing us to continue to make dett noise time and time again, and not finally complain on us.
I wanna know how you did it.
Thanks.
Hi.
Oh, no, the council.
Oh, okay. Do you want us to separate, can you see them? Do you want us to separate now?
No, you guys are good. Yeah, Miss Alacan? Yeah, you're right there. All right, ready, three, two, one. Three, two, one. One more, three, two, one.
Okay, and we have another presentation, this one's gonna be from our Code Enforcement Group, I believe. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. I forgot that you guys are so special, and we have both Assemblymen's Offices here to present to you also. Thank you, and so sorry, ever since my stroke, I can't remember anything. There you go. I know, we probably.
Of course. Well, we're so grateful for this opportunity to be able to be here and present you guys with this amazing certificate on behalf of Assemblymember Juan Correio, congratulating on your 70th anniversary. I had the pleasure and the honor to be there last weekend, it was wow, amazing just to be there and celebrate with all of you, thank you for everything you're doing. The Assemblymember was supposed to be here, unfortunately couldn't make it up the hill, so he sent us, you get us, so congratulations again, I'd like to present this certificate to you.
Thank you very much.
Ready, two, one, three, two, one.
Don't leave, don't leave.
Sorry, guys, you can't sit down yet. On behalf of Assemblyman Tom Lackey of the 34th District, it is my honor to be here to recognize you guys on the U-2 program's 70th anniversary, the actual date's the 23rd, right?
August 1st.
Is it August 1st? You, well, somebody needs to correct Google. I'm just saying, I looked it up and it said August 2nd. Anyways, so, at this stage, it is my honor to recognize Lockheed Martin for your unwavering dedication, technical mastery, and enduring contributions to national security and aerospace advancement. The U-2 program stands as a testament to visionary engineering and operational excellence, delivering critical intelligence capabilities for over six decades, it's a long time. Thank you for your shield of freedom and it's signed Assemblymember Lackey of the 34th District.
Ready, three, two, one, three, two, one.
Any final words, gentlemen? Anybody else want to talk? You guys good? Okay.
Very glad.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, I'm sorry about that, sorry, thank you. Now you're good.
No worries. Good evening, City Council, my name is Marley Arta, I serve as the Public Safety Manager, and ensuring public safety is a vital concern that impacts our communities regardless of location. Tonight, I'd like to share a short video that highlights some of our recent accomplishments and showcases our ongoing efforts to maintain and to improve the safety of Palmdale.
In Palmdale, safety isn't just a slogan, it's a mission, and we're delivering it. Thanks to the leadership of our City Council and the support of our residents, Palmdale's Public Safety Team has turned commitment into action, and action into results. Our 75 flock license plate reader cameras help track stolen vehicles, combat human trafficking, and solve burglaries, fast, and we're pursuing grants to expand this vital network even more. Through our Keeping Kids Safe initiative, we brought parking and pedestrian safety to local schools, protecting our future starts now. We're fighting retail theft head-on, leading regional collaboration through quarterly Antelope Valley organized Retail Crime Task Force meetings. Over 1,000 residents joined us at National Night Out, and our new district neighborhood watch events connected us with thousands more, delivering safety block by block. We participated in the 2025 LA County Homeless Count, gathering data to guide real compassionate solutions. We sent over 4,000 welcome letters to businesses, and they responded. By joining our Reimagine Business Watch, they attended events, received free bring cameras, and were highlighted on city billboards. Our Gun Buyback Program removed over 200 firearms from our streets, reducing danger before it begins. Through our SER partnership, we provided spay and neuter services to over 1,200 pets since 2022, and 400 since January 2025, with 150 microchip. At three Vet at the Park events, nearly 1,000 pets received free care, more than any city in LA County. With 11 new vehicles and four new staff, including our first Director of Public Safety, we expanded our reach and response. Have a safety concern? The My Palmdale app makes reporting and tracking issues quick and easy wherever you are. We confiscated more than 150 misused handicap placards, restoring accessibility to those who needed most. With over 100 inspections and FDA-trained officers, we're helping vendors comply with food safety standards, protecting residents while supporting small businesses. Community service officers responded to 3,600 calls, documented 1,800 crime reports, and submitted 74 property crime cases, freeing up deputies for urgent calls. We work with property owners to prevent illegal dumping and encampments, preserving Palmdale's beauty and safety. With 350 pounds of fireworks seized, 60 citations issued, and 250 complaints addressed. Our If You Light It, We'll Write It campaign made one thing clear, we take fireworks seriously. We gave free $50 Dunn Edwards gift cards plus a 20% discount to graffiti vendors, helping them reclaim their property and pride. We're relaunching the Brave Program with Palmdale School District, creating safe spaces, tackling bullying, and empowering students to leave. Stay tuned, there is more to come. None of this happened by accident, it happened because of bold council leadership, because of engaged resilient residents, and because in Palmdale, we don't just talk about safety, we build it. One action, one program, one neighborhood at a time. This is public safety. This is Palmdale. Join the Public Safety Team at Pan Solon Square tonight for National Night Out. This free, family-friendly event promotes law enforcement, community partnerships, and neighborhood camaraderie with safety displays, giveaways, food, and fun activities for all ages. In Palmdale.
That's cooler than rounding out, nice of data, but as you can see, we're doing some really cool things, and, but, none of it is possible without the strong leadership and the support of our community and council. You guys have been amazing, you guys give us the tools that we need to effectively do our job, so, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And if I may, I'd like to recognize our Public Safety Officers and our.
And Chris Man, just congrats.
They did a really great job, our deputies, thank you guys so much, too, and our admin staff that pulled it down, they're the muscle behind our team, so, thank you, available for any questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Please.
Yeah, I make one, huh?
Absolutely.
I just think that this is great, that the people that protect this city on every single level is here, from our code to our deputies, from the makers of peace around the world, like, this is awesome, it makes me so proud of Palmdale to be such a defense community with that heritage, and to know that the next generation is stepping up and everything coming up Palmdale. This is awesome, thank you.
Oh, we're gonna go to, next to public comments, so anybody who needs to leave or who wants to go out and spend some time at National Night Out, you're welcome to escape, and then, and then we'll start with our public comments, thank you so much, too.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's City Council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to advise by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
We have Jason Zink, item 6.9.
Yeah, I wanna talk about 6.9, which is the, looks at completion of Avenue M and 20th and 30th Street East Project. I went over there and drove it and looked at the project, and to me, it's not complete. The yellow line that goes around the signal is supposed to help people that are, you know, maybe looking at their texts, their phones or whatever, to let them know, hey, there's a signal coming up, to grab their attention, it's not thick enough. It's a very thin line that Palmdale did. Caltrans is twice the thickness, but I think the whole backlash, since most cars drive 70 miles an hour on that road, should be the whole backup, it should be yelling, grab people's attention, to let them know it could be possible. It's a very, you know, it's a high-speed road, it's a regional road, but my other concern is that I drove Avenue M, 10th Street and 20th and 30th Street, we have potholes that are over an inch deep, cracks everywhere. Like, you're not gonna fix these roads with just patching them with potholes, hot patch, you're gonna have to reconstruct these roads and repave them. I'm really concerned that the last city manager neglected this city, the upkeep of it. I believe that we have 100, $200 million worth of repaving projects that are, that were needed yesterday, and I would like to see our city agenda just address that one item alone. A Lancaster borrowed $50 million to get their streets up to par, and they're not even close. Fresno borrowed $100 million for their city streets. I propose a measure of PD, is an extra sales tax measure, every single cent goes to fixing our third-world condition city streets, and putting in all the missing street signs and faded streets. We should be paving every day to get our city up to par, to create high standards for our community. And so I'd like to see that on the agenda, and I'd like to see the city staff give you a report of what's needed citywide, the condition of every street, I'd like the internet interactive map of when they're gonna be paved, and we need to address this, we deserve better. We have, we're paying the highest sales tax in the state, we have the highest property tax and sales tax we've ever had, franchise taxes we've ever had. We deserve better, and this issue, a third-world country, third-world country streets need to be addressed by this City Council, thank you.
No, please, your cards on this section, Mayor, Council. Anybody else on concerned items before you close public comments? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments, Council, is there anyone that would like to pull an item from concerned calendar? If I could, may I please pull 6.12? 12? 6.12, oh. 6.12, this, towards Ben.
I'll make a motion for the remaining balance.
Second. We're gonna do a voice vote? Yes. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And anybody opposed? Favor?
Aye.
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 And anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so Andrea, we'll go to 612.
Thank you, I pulled this item and I've had a chance to have a conversation with staff, if you could just come forward, the reason why I pulled this item is because it's so important to those who may need financial assistance in addressing, or in surviving, paying for their power and electric bills, and this is a program that has already been launched, but this is another opportunity for us to share a little bit about, about what this program entails, how to apply for it, and what you, what is required to qualify for it, so please, thank you.
Yes, absolutely, I do have copies of the presentation, if you guys would like me to provide those for you. And then, do we have that available to pull up on the screen? It wasn't working. Oh, they have it.
Yeah, they fixed it.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and esteemed Council members. My name is Donita Talavera, and I am presenting tonight on EPIC's Power Choice Program and the Need for a Residential Peak Demand Incentive Response Program. First, I'd like to explain just really quickly what the Power Choice Program is. So first and foremost, it is the only residential and commercial solar and battery backup program that is endorsed by the City of Palmdale. So if you hear Power Choice, it is an actual program, it's real, it sounds too good to be true, it is not, so let me get that off first and foremost. What this program provides is it does provide zero upfront costs to residents and businesses, no credit checks, no minimum monthly income requirements, no liens, and all residents and businesses are eligible to apply. The benefits of the program include long-term energy savings, emergency power backup, clean green energy, complimentary repairs and replacement, and you're able to lock in low energy rates for 20 years. We have various programs, there are four in total. The first one is the traditional program, this pair is solar plus battery backup. The second option that I really wanna highlight tonight is the Power Choice Care Program. This is solar plus battery backup with additional cost savings. This does require proof of income, and you do need to be a care customer, so this is for income-qualified residents who would maybe not be able to afford solar, this removes those barriers, and it also does provide even additional cost savings from the traditional Power Choice Program. The third option is the Power Choice Commercial Program, this is for businesses, it gives them that same luxury as our residential customers, providing solar plus battery backup, and this is for all businesses regardless of size, small businesses and large businesses alike. And then lastly, we have the Power Choice Battery retrofit program, so if you have existing solar, but you don't have battery, this is the option that would make your solar work best for you financially. Thank you. All right, and so. And so what is a demand response incentive program, and why is it needed? Um, it's basically, it's a way to help reduce our electricity when we're using the most. So when it's a really hot summer day and everybody kind of has the AC on, these are times when our grid would be strained, and that's when this program would come in, and it would help to reduce blackouts. What would happen is the customer would agree to reduce their energy during a specific time period. They would receive a notification letting them know that we have, uh, an event, is what we would call that. And then customers have two options at that, at that time. They can either choose to reduce their electricity and receive bill credits and other incentives, or they can use their regular amount of power and still pay their same amount for their power. Um, the big thing here is a demand response incentive program is a requirement of the California Public Utilities Commission. So what we're doing here tonight is we're presenting this item for approval so that every Epic customer can reap the same benefits as an SCE customer. So it removes all of those barriers and levels the playing field so we can provide clean, green energy for our residents and those same financial incentives that the traditional investor-owned utility would provide. Um, just to touch really quickly here on some of the program milestones. In, uh, November 15th, 2023, we were here to present the Power Choice Program for council approval. It was approved. May 16th, 2024, Epic launched for residential, um, program only. December 18th, 2024, we came back to council, and we decided to expand the program, including commercial and industrial customers, and we also included local channel partners. So rather than just having one national company, we have local companies that are here, ready to serve you, providing local jobs in our community. April 2025, Epic launched the Power Choice Care Program. This is a way to provide solar for our most economically challenged residents, and we're here today seeking the council's approval for this demand, uh, response incentive program. Lastly, how can you apply? You can visit Epic's website. If you go to the programs page, you click programs, it will take you directly to all of our current offerings. Power Choice will be found right at the top there. If you believe you may be a care customer, there's an option for care as well. We also have flyers that will be available on the back in both English and Spanish. And staff requests city council approve the energy for Palmdale's Independent Choice Residential Peak Demand Response Incentive Program. And I'm available for questions.
Okay, Andrea, you pulled it.
Thank you. Yeah, no questions. I just wanted to, again, take the opportunity to sort of remind, um, all of, of the residents of Palmdale, specifically those that are in, uh, most need, that there are resources that are available, uh, to help offset some of the costs of living. I mean, it's, everybody is living, you know, as best as we can, given the escalating costs of all of life necessities. So those that need applications, they're in the back. You can go visit these websites. Uh, if you're income-qualified, this will help to, to offset and reduce your, your energy costs. So thank you for, for bringing that forth. Uh, and with that, I move to approve.
Mr. Lila, I see your lights on too much.
No.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any other comments before we vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Should we call for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. If anyone needs more information, I'll be out in the park for National Night Out.
Oh, okay.
And we have a canopy, so we'd love to see you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number seven, public hearing. So first, we're going to open the public hearing and then read the resolution. All right, so.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority exempt facility bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 95 million for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of Palmdale family housing and certain other matters relating.
Okay, is staff going to provide a report? Come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. My name is Janelle Sampson, Director of Operations. Um, the item before you is a hearing that is required, a public hearing required by the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, otherwise known as the TEFFRA Act. Um, and this is, I just want to point out, the 95, $95 million bond, this is not a, um, a liability of the city. This would be something that the, the developer is seeking for the CMFA to issue and is required because the project is located within Palmdale's jurisdiction. Uh, the property is located on 15th Street East between about Q5 and Q6 and is approximately 264-unit development. We do have representatives from the CMFA as well as the developer affinity homes here if you have any specific questions.
Okay.
Were the affinity reps?
Actually, Affirmed Housing.
Oh, Affirmed, Affirmed Housing. Can you guys just, do you have a moment to just share with us a little bit about what the project entails? It's an exciting project, and it's pretty expansive, so I thought the community might want to know what's coming down the pike.
Hi, my name is Vianer Valkava. Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Affirmed Housing. Um, and we're proposing to build a 100% affordable housing development here in the City of Palmdale. Um, this will include a number of community amenities, including a community center, after-school program for the residents and the kids. Uh, we have parking for every single unit and, and even more, that's our parking ratio. And then we also have other amenities, like a splash pad, uh, pool, you know, different sports courts and things like that. So this development will, uh, serve families that make, uh, 30 to 60% of the area median income. So, yeah, I'll take any specific questions if you have them.
Anybody have questions?
No questions, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the call for public testimony.
We have Jason Zink.
I first want to talk about the agenda and preparing a proper agenda that's, uh, common courtesy and public-friendly to the public. This does not, uh, say anything about what this $95 million is for on the agenda. It should have the address, it should have the cross streets, and it should have the APN number. Uh, last week, you guys had a special meeting. You did not notify us that you were having a special meeting, uh, at the last city council meeting. Again, transparency is, it, the image and appearance seems like you guys are doing things in secrecy behind closed doors. And when you went to the agenda item on the special agenda, it didn't say what it was about. It just said "strategy session." It didn't have any attachments or anything. I don't want a city like that. Why can't you guys just be transparent and tell us what you guys are doing? I mean, you're paying city staff 100, 200, $500,000. They can't take a second for, out of respect to the community, and do a little paragraph and do the attachments to the agenda? We deserve better. My problem with this project isn't the applicant. I'm thankful that he's bringing more units to the city. My problem is this property, there's no sidewalks, there's no grocery store, there's nothing. You're just building an apartment out there in the desert. These people will not have a quality of life, just like the people in Corson Park here around the apartments around there, have no grocery store. They live in a food desert. And I've asked Austin Bishop, who represents the first district, from day one to provide a grocery store for the residents, low-income residents that don't have a car, to have a grocery store. And he hasn't done anything in nine years. So I just want more transparency. I think we deserve better. I think we deserve common courtesy, and I just, just pretend that you guys were us. I guarantee you wouldn't even know what this was about if you were sitting out here. Just give us better. Thank you for your time.
No further speaker cards on this item.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close public testimony. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So before we do that, I just want to, just for the record, note that on page two of our staff report, it, uh, references the exact address, 38851, 15th Street East of this project. It also references in the attached resolution, 2025-055, in the first whereas, so it has been properly noticed. With that, so moved.
Second?
Oh.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we're on item number eight, city manager's report.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. We continue on Fridays with our farmer's market every Friday at Oasis Park. Additionally, this Friday, we will also have, uh, family movie night, which, which will be featuring Despicable Me 4 at the Palmdale Amphitheater. Gates will open at 6:00 PM. Um, this Saturday will be the highly anticipated TLC concert. Additionally, the next Saturday, the Saturday after that, we will have our, uh, other concert, which will feature the Beach Boys. There's only a handful of concerts, uh, tickets left, so you guys get on the website. Uh, Beach Boys in two weeks, TLC this weekend, so go out and have a good time and finish the concert series with a bang. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now is number, item number nine, non-agenda public comments.
We have Rich Caigle.
Excuse me a minute. So I'm going to ask you to bear with me for a moment. It might seem like what I'm speaking about has no relevance here, but I'll tie it up. For years, we've been coming to this chamber telling our council that fentanyl Rex has too much sway over this body and therefore over the residents that it's supposed to serve. Aside from the fact that he's never been elected to govern Palmdale, why would we be concerned? Because from what I can tell, he's a man of exceptionally low character. Recently, he made international news when he wanted to give homeless all the free fentanyl they wanted. Then he said he wanted a purge. Not long after that, he claimed to have seen a rock in Lake Los Angeles that was, upon which was written the phrase, "RIP Rex." It was probably a grave mark for some kid's dog, but he claimed that it had to be interpreted as a death threat towards him. And as if that wasn't crazy enough, he proceeded to claim it was probably from, quote, "the terrorist group from the neighboring city," close quote, alluding to the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. He's threatened to sue PFC based on completely spurious allegations. He's accused us of posting lies when we posted FBI crime statistics. At one point in the last mayoral campaign, he even blamed PFC for a downturn in Lancaster's economy. I wish we had that kind of poll. At one point during the last, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Palmdale Freedom Coalition has spent the past four years proving that we are concerned with making our city a better place to live by holding our elected representatives accountable. We have never engaged in legal activities of any sort, and we're tired of being defamed by the would-be dictator in the neighboring city. And when a group of Lancaster residents recently decided to recall him, he responded by suing them. Why? Because they had the temerity to exercise their First Amendment rights to petition their government for redress of grievances. Thankfully and rightfully, the ACLU filed an anti-slap suit against Lancaster, and last Tuesday in an LA courtroom, the Recall Rex campaign, PFC, and most importantly, the people of Lancaster prevailed when the judge threw out Rex's suit. Most of this lunacy is clearly an attempt to silence citizens, and how does Lancaster City Council react? They sit in the dais in complicit silence. To my knowledge, not one of them has attempted to denounce, to denounce him or distance themselves from his behavior. And frankly, this body has done no different. So item number, number one, I want to know if there's even one of you who's willing to stand up and take a principled stand and denounce Rex Paris's behavior. These are Palmdale residents, Palmdale citizens, that he keeps defaming over and over again. I would like, we would like, to see Palmdale sever ties with Lancaster until their FBI investigation is done, until their recall issue is resolved in anything except for emergency services or, or road construction, that, you know, essential services like that. Item number two, I gave each of you an ordinance, uh, proposal tonight and a demand letter from PFC that we want to have the return of the elected mayor. Let's get this started. Let's talk about it in public.
That was great. Thank you, Rich.
No, I don't have a visible clock anymore. And we need the town halls, and if you guys don't call them, we'll call them and bring the information to you.
We're having technical difficulties. It's not even broadcasting.
We have Jason Zink.
We're having technical difficulties.
Technical issues. Thank you for understanding.
Highest ta, sales tax in the state, and we don't have a clock. Elecon, stop making excuses for staff. Basic information is supposed to be on the agenda. Don't say it was attached. If you look for this, if you're a computer whiz and all this stuff, you have to dig for things. Come on, you're a representative. Act like one. I want this city council to testify before the county board of supervisors about this mental struggle of our super commuters driving to LA every day. Two to five hours they drive. I just went to LAX, it took me five hours to come there and back today. And you guys can't testify before the county board of supervisors to advocate for them, to create better lives for them? I could do a better job as a citizen, but you guys are paid. You guys represent. You guys got million-dollar staff. Why can't you do that? So simple. Catherine Barker is a chair. I don't get it. Uh, city council, oh, city council's budget doubled. Are you guys now getting pensions from the city? Then why did it double? I'd like to know. Rhonda Perez is now city manager of Malibu, right? She just gave you guys a finger. She makes, you guys paid her, what, $300,000 to sit at home for six months? So basically, you guys owe us money because we told you never to hire her in the first place. So I'd like the city attorney to make payment arrangements so you guys pay us back. You guys have, have cost us so much money and time and energy. You guys owe us. You guys should have to pay us back for all your mistakes, all the phony lawsuits that you guys caused. I would not be proud to be a council member of one of you. Uh, AV, uh, high school district is doing 12 and a half million to Aquatic Center. What happened to Lancaster giving us 12 and a half mil, I mean, what happened to Lancaster giving us 12 and a half million back for us giving money to the emergency center that they built the fairgrounds? Where's our rec center? Where's our money? You should sue the high school district for, because it's not in the bond measure that they were going to build the aquatic center. So sue the high school district. Stop that. Marvin Chris doesn't need another building named after him. Where is our mayor elected at large? You guys all agreed to it. It's been a year. You've asked the city manager, the last one, and this one to put her on the agenda, and it's not on the agenda. Are you guys phony? Toothfaced? What is it?
Time.
We deserve better.
Betsy Haslett.
Oh, there's our timer.
Good afternoon, city council. Three of you know me from when I was with PFC, Palmdale Freedom Coalition, and ordinance 1577. This is the Palmdale Partners Academy. Palmdale Partners Academy. Anybody can take it. I have friends from Lancaster that took it. You don't have to, I'm in unincorporated Palmdale, but it says here about the mayor council, about mayor council cities, it's a weak mayor system. And I was here that night that two of you were re, were elected when there was a fifth district added, and you both thanked Mayor Paris from Lancaster for helping you with your campaigns. How dare you? That's a conflict of interest. And somebody else on the council that does business, and then he promotes his voting by putting a huge sign to, uh, mark his territory with these new buildings that went up at 10th West and, and that are, the traffic is horrendous there now. That's also a conflict of interest. But I was here that night that you figured out, how are we going to choose the mayor now that we have five districts? Because we had, when we had one, four districts, and they'd each get a year term, and you decide a pick a ping pong ball that was numbered, pre-numbered. Well, fortunately, considering how some- Well, fortunately, considering how some things have happened with another council member that you didn't go to doing it eight months, which was someone had whispered behind me, well, you can't do a year, do it for eight months. And well, you all get a term. But that turned out good. But, and then someone else, I heard through the grapevine that somebody on the council admitted that all of you should go. Be gone, get completely bored. I hope whoever comes on to the council will take this Palmdale Partners Academy. Everybody else should take this. Find out how your city government works. It's free. I took it in 2019. It was the last class before COVID hit, and there was a pause. At that time, I was impressed with the longevity of city employees. And then I came to a meeting, it was when you were trying to get rid of JJ Murphy, the daytime meeting, and one of the city workers was on leave of absence or something. And she, I remember calling in, she says, there is, Palmdale City is hemorrhaging employees. And yes, you are hemorrhaging employees. It doesn't, doesn't show the longevity it used to have. And if you all, if one of you thinks you should all go, then why don't you please all go and find someone that will be a much better city council position for your district? Because what's going on here and the conflict of interest going on between the cities and Paris and this AV measure decorating these electric boxes, it's nice to know that my tax dollars I pay, you want me to do business near community, even though I'm unincorporated. I still do try to do business here. So really think about finding better people to fill your shoes.
Rhonda Perez canceled that program.
She's gone, so can get someone else to take it over.
Tammy Davis.
Is there Tammy Davis?
Yes, it is. Good evening. My name is Tammy Davis. I'm a resident of Palmdale, California for the past 20 years. City of Palmdale have a contract with the owners of the property in which I live in, and they have been falsifying information, and you all have been upholding them and agreeing with them in this contract. I contacted the city of Palmdale on July the 1st. I gave them pertinent information, my pertinent private information, to help me. Sarah, who works here, I don't know her last name, she did, she got involved. She tagged all of that compartment. I did receive a phone call today that they did do a decrease because they inadvertently been raising my rent for the past 13 years. I have been in this same building before, this esteemed council, the mayor. I've heard how you spent thousands of dollars to rescue dogs, but I am next door neighbor to being homeless. Today, I received a phone call. I didn't get the help that I really needed, but those ladies did, they got involved. But let me tell you what I am going to do. I have contacted the world-renowned activist, a doctor from Texas, because that's where I'm from, the South. We don't play. And they're going to vet this. I'm telling you, they're going to vet everything. The codes that they gave me today, I don't know anything about them, but we vetting them. We, I'm going, I want them to investigate the past 13 years. They did, she sent a letter to me saying that she gave me a notice on the 30th of June. She lied. She gave it to me on the first when I paid her my check for my lease, and I received a letter on July the 9th. So it was after she, and she didn't get a certification from me. But you guys don't look into that, and you all, and 20 minutes before Sophia, the director of housing, gave me a call, they called me after they signed off on what is being done. I don't have anything else to say because I've said for the past years, you know my name, you know who I am, and I'm honest, I'm transparent. I have no problem with transparent. I worked for Governor Ben Foster, I was his liaison, Senator Cleo Fields. I retired from Louisiana State University. And the only reason why I'm not active is because I'm disabled. My bones are shrinking. Benjamin Button's sister backwards. But I still can get up out of my bed, but my mouth and my mind still work.
Ma'am, for the record, can you, I'm not sure where you reside. Which housing development do you live in?
I am a resident for the past 13 years. I know all these people, esteemed, I mean, no disrespect. I'm not here to counter you because of what you do. I came here for help, and they didn't help me. They didn't. I live in Twin Palms. As a matter of fact, I emailed you last year when they put these fetter chain gate, lock gates on the, and I couldn't get out because it was a fire. July the 4th, 2024. I was, I was stuck. And that fire jumped across, from across the street, and it came over to the property. I had no way of getting out, no way of surviving. And I came here and I told you, and I think it was maybe 72 hours, y'all sent somebody down there, and he cut that chain off of that gate because we could have died. I went to the paper, but I'm telling you, I'm going national with this and social media because I, I don't have no more fight. I did it the respectful way. I gave you everything. You know more about me than I know about you. But when I did do that information, they didn't help me. Now let me say this, Terry Lee Wheeler, she helped me. And a young lady named Vicki, they're no longer here. But those women took it upon themselves and the authority that they had, and they made a meeting in their conference room, and they put those people, owners. You don't do that to our residents. And since they left, I haven't been helped like that. That's all I have to say. You don't have to tell me my three mans.
Can I have your information? They made my two aunts homeless for the same reason.
David Berver.
And I respect this community. I really do because I do believe that you care. I'm not here to challenge your care or make you feel bad about yourself, but I want to make you aware about the illegal stuff that goes on.
David, you can step up to podium.
And you need to look into it, how they are overpricing us, impoverished people squeezing and making turdles for us, but y'all saving dogs.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good afternoon, city council mayor. My name is David. Tough day today again, huh? Um, I wanted to make it short because I don't want to get those tacos out there that are doing good. Just a reminder, I know you were still waiting. I'm still here just to remind you about, you know, we had a great time. I saw Bishop at Coolin the Gang. It was great. But as I was pondering, I was sitting there watching this, I was just wondering, like, because ICE is not going to stop. We know it's coming. Trump's going to, with the beautiful bill that he just passed, right? $75 billion is coming to ICE. You really think it's going to stay down the hill? It's going to come up sooner or later. And as I was sitting there watching Coolin the Gang, I was wondering how many of us would be affected? How many of us would be afraid to even get out there? And me, being a US citizen, I don't know how, again, I said it before, I don't know how I would react if somebody touched my wife. So I'm just asking to consider that. And then the last thing, um, gentleman, I think Bishop was, one of the things I do agree with him, and I'm glad that they're going to build a housing for affordable housing folks. Just something to think about, um, we are building a lot. There's, I mean, when I moved here first years ago, I mean, you can take empty lot pictures, right? And now it's, I live right now, I moved into one of those newer homes, and I still have my older house here on Avenue S. But yeah, it's building so fast that we are having more traffic. So something to consider, like, maybe there has to be a way where we can be ahead of the curve before building so fast and so quick, and then we don't have the resources to allocate for, you know, traffic. Because those potholes are not going anywhere. Either way, I know it's been a tough week for all you guys, well, last month, right? But I'm just here as a reminder, a lot of us are here to support you guys. We know it's not going to be easy. Just, if anything, yeah, if, just try to, maybe just more bullet points on the agenda, that might just help a little bit. I don't think you guys are hiding anything. It's just, I think we're just busy, and then sometimes your staff gets busy too. Just an oversight. I think it goes a long way. That's it. That was my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Soderstadt.
Wow, I have to follow all these impassioned pleas? I feel like I'm at Battle of the Bands and have to follow the Rolling Stones. When all I wanted to comment on was, I like the rotating mayor system. That way, everybody gets a shot at it. And I would like to remind my friends at PFC, if we get to vote for a mayor, we can vote for Andrea Alarcon. So you might get what you want.
I want what the people want.
Okay, there you go. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Bravo, Saz. Yes.
Hey, good evening. First name is Sidlali, last name Bravo Sosa. Good evening, council members, mayor pro tem. I live and work at AV. I am raising four children whose future career goals aim to support the medical and engineering fields. I stand before you to request action, proactive action addressing the immigration agents that have been emboldened to mask, to be masked throughout LA County. As we all know, public officers need to be identifiable. As to prevent illegal or criminal actions, they would permit the impersonation of an officer. As we heard earlier, Palmdale is a place for innovation and a place that supports public safety. It is a public safety issue that we, that impedes transparency to the public. Be the council members that create proactive, innovative solutions that bring transparency to our city. These intimidating tactics should not be carried out in our city. Thank you.
No further speaker cards on this section?
Okay, I'll go ahead and close. Oh, I'm sorry, Marsha. I apologize.
It's perfectly all right. I'm a registered voter. I live in Palmdale. I cannot vote for a council member in Lancaster. I can vote for a board member for the Antelope Valley Union High School District, and I can vote for my district council member here in Palmdale. $10 million went for the disaster center at the fairgrounds. It could have gone to one of our rec centers. Do the people of Palmdale know that the two rec centers that they voted for and paid for themselves are disaster centers? We could have used that $10 million to expand those disaster centers right in our own backyard. If something happens, a disaster, fire, flood, earthquake, you think we're going to be able to get on the freeway to get to that disaster center and be first in line to get in that building? No. I can vote for the Antelope Valley Union High School District Board Member. I did not vote for the bond, and this is, and that's why the aquatic center. They're giving $10 million to the city of Lancaster to build that aquatic center. Do you know that the high school uses a swimming pool three months in a year only after school, Monday through Friday? It only uses it one Saturday a whole school year and one full school day a whole school year. All the rest of the time, the pool will be available for Lancaster. Lancaster did not build the pool at Eastside either. That was also a shared project with the high school district. They got a real thing going on there. So also, the meeting that you had last week on Monday at the college with Lancaster, I would like a detailed report on that meeting. I want to know what it was about. I want to know how much it was going to cost, whatever it's going to be, who's going to maintain whatever it is, where it's going to be built. And I believe it's not going to be built in Palmdale because Lancaster doesn't pay up 100% for anything. It's like a little baby pig sucking on the tit of everything that walks by that's got a little bit of milk in it. It's just going to suck and suck and suck, and for some reason, we're all a bunch of stupid sows. Thank you.
Before I close, public comments. Anyone else for public comments? Come on up, Mark. Sure. That's fine.
Mark Maldonado, councilmen and ladies and pro tem, Laura Bettencourt. So you guys know that I, I'm all over Lancaster and Palmdale, okay? But when it comes into regards to Palmdale, there's a lot of people that asked, that voiced their opinions to me on what's going on in Palmdale, and they've been very, very upset and disgusted about what's been going on with everything that's been happening here in the last, the last couple of months between the city council members. As far as a mayor at large, that's what the people want. They want that mayor at large, they want to be able to vote for their mayor, okay? They don't believe that there should be a rotation with who's going to, who's going to get, who's going to get the call next, okay? And you guys are put up there to do the business of the people, not your business. And you guys are representatives. You're not, you know, you can lead, but you got to be representatives first, meaning that they put you there to listen to what they want. And I'm sorry if I get a little bit passionate about this, but I tend to believe that what they're saying is true. So I would really urge you guys to take the ordinance. We talked about an ordinance?
Yes.
Take the ordinance and do something with it. You know, because that's what needs to be done, all right? And it's the right thing to do. And let's, you know, I want to speak for the NRA. There's a, there's a group out here that came out and asked for help, and they were turned down several times from what I was told. But yet, Eric, you're a veteran, and you support some type of a veteran entity out here. Am I correct?
I support all veterans.
Okay, well, there's one that you supposedly have, I think that have given money to or the city has given it to them, but when another group came in that has veterans involved, they didn't get the same response. In fact, they didn't get any help. So I'm just asking that you guys, they feel like they've been discriminated against. So I'm going to speak for them on that. They feel, they said that they felt discriminated. So I'm asking for you guys to be a little bit more cognate on when it comes to the veterans because if it wasn't for the veterans, you guys wouldn't be sitting up here. We wouldn't be able to do what we're doing. We wouldn't have our, you know, we wouldn't have the freedoms that we have. So please, let's, let's be a little bit more concerned about what, what the veterans are asking for. Thank you.
Sorry, running late. Had to work today. Just a couple of real quick things. The first thing is, I was talking to one of you over the week and was surprised to find out that you didn't know about the recall campaign or the lawsuit that Rex and his folks laid against the people of Lancaster. Atrocious, they even brought the police force in. Robert Christian, I believe is his last name, on the last day of the possibility of putting anything into lawsuit, took his time to go and pool video and screenshots of the recall people out there protesting prior to one of the meetings. It is beyond me that none of you have said anything publicly about Rex and the Lancaster, the Lancaster City Council. The level of, of malfeasance against the people is insane, you guys, you know? I think our city compared to them is relatively calm. That's saying a lot, okay? Because we know the trials that we have. But when they're doing the things that they're doing to the people over there, they laid a lawsuit against 85 people who are exercising their constitutional right to a recall. They did a writ of mandate against all 85 of them, and then the, the courts found that it was a moot point. But yet, they continue to hassle the citizens by asking for discovery, telling the keep. You know how people do when they're trying to scare you with the law? And we all know that that's what Rex Paris does. And the thing that makes me disgusted, I can understand that somebody like him, and I'm really trying hard not to call him names, I, I, it is beyond me that he's the mayor over there. It's beyond me. But the thing that bothers me the most is that there's nine other people who are staying silent. silent about all the stuff that he's doing against the people. Four of them and five of you. So I'm asking you tonight, I'm asking you, pleading with you, to say something in public and denounce what they have done. They brought the police force against the people. We have the paperwork, I'll be glad to send it to you. Insane. They took their valuable time as police officers to go and pull screenshots and video and send it to the court. And by the way, just for the record, I have 21 seconds left. The recall never died, it never stopped. A recall is a movement. It's not a moment, it's not an event, it's a movement. And the movement is still alive. And part of the reason that movement is alive is because we actually have hope in our city that we can get these guys off of our backs and get to doing the work that our city should be doing. So thank you.
Come on up. Okay, a big amen to the last one. Okay, so I'm Carol Ross, and I agree, I want to say I agree with all of those things. We want a mayor at large, we want to vote. If it becomes an issue because if there's a mayor and there's six, and now you have equal, then let's vote for a mayor and a mayor pro tem. Let's do that. But we want a mayor, we keep saying that, and again, it should be the will of the people, not the will of the council. So yes, and I, we have begged, begged the council previously, we need to detach from Lancaster and the corruption that's going on there that we're seeing even more. It's even more sickening, not that we're seeing the corruption, but that we're seeing bullying by that mayor. And that is just absolutely disgusting. He's bullying, he is bullying the residents, he's bullying people that are doing lawful things. That is absolutely disgusting. We don't want to have anything to do with it, and I realize sometimes cities have to work together to a degree, but you know what? At this point, I would be saying, let's cut ties because we, you know what? We have to be careful who we are associating with. And if we want to keep our city clean and not corrupt, then we need to detach from the corruption and the, the bullying and the disgusting behavior that is going on in the city upstream from us. Thank you. Any other speakers? Come on up.
Yes, Betsy Haslett, I didn't introduce myself the first time. Something has been brought up, the time that you were meeting, 5:00 PM, here someone rushed to get off from, from work to come speak. Why aren't you doing this to associate, to identify, to serve the people you are supposed to be serving, not yourselves? What happened to meeting at 7:00 PM, maybe even 6:30? And that have, and then you changed, I think it used to be on Wednesday nights, and now it's on Tuesday? It's nice that this national night out is happening, but it was very inconvenient for people wanting to come to attend this city council meeting. There ought to be much better scheduling within your city council and Parks and Rec and all that. So please consider how you can serve the people better than serving yourselves. And I don't know why people that are sitting around in official capacities can be doing other things and not paying, paying attention to the meeting, especially for someone to my left that's been on her phone the whole time, almost the whole time. Is she recording this? Is she a court reporter that she would be doing this? Or is she disengaged from the meeting and not listening to what's going on? I've seen some blank stares on several of you. Please be interested in the people you're supposed to serve. Read your constitution. You're a public servant. Thank you.
Last call for speakers. Anybody that has not spoken and who wants to speak? Seeing none, I'm going ahead and closing. Public comments for non-agenda items. We're moving on to item number 10, council reports, announcements, and requests for future agenda items with the permission of the city attorney. I would like to give the council an opportunity to respond to things that they may have heard from, from the public, not to engage in a conversation with the public. I know that's off, off limits. I've been warned. But if they have something that they want to respond to, what they've heard, can they do that?
Yes, you can respond briefly to clarify, but again, let's be mindful, none of these things were agendized, so you can only respond back briefly and basically don't get into it.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to respond? Well, I do. So here we go. I guess I'm a little confused because you want us to go to a directed elected mayor, but yet the mayor that was elected in Lancaster by the vote of the people is now trying, you're trying to recall them. So is it the will of the people or is it not? So that's a problem. We'll talk about that later another time. Secondly, I have no association with Lancaster, just so you know. And I want to quote for the record, I want this on record, that I voted no on the mark. I think at the time, I was the only person, and I took quite a beating at the time for voting no. So I just wanted to, to make that clear. So that's all I have to say in response. There's other things on my mind, but there's a lot going on, so. Oh, yes, absolutely, sure.
I filed my monthly report with the city clerk. But I would request, in whatever the process is under our rules, that we do put the directly elected mayor on a future agenda as soon as possible. And I think that we had previously requested an analysis of the process that we could use, whether the council could act itself or perhaps a process through the initiative. So I would request that we do that, and that's my motion.
I'm going to make a counter motion. Because what this ordinance will do is another $15 million lawsuit. Because there's several things that you have to factor. You can't just come in and say, I want it, so I demand it. You have to do things properly. I'm talking, it's my turn to respond.
Wow, okay.
You come in here and you accuse other people of bullies while acting like bullies. It's so inappropriate. I am speaking, it is my time.
You're speaking a bunch of nonsense.
There are things that must be considered. There's the election code.
You're spending a million on the market center that nobody wanted.
There's an election code that must be considered. There's our charter that must be considered, and there's the Califorting, California Voting Rights Act that must be considered. So when the previous council made their decision to remove the directly elected mayor, it fit within all three of those things. Our ordinance allowed us to do it, I mean, our charter, the election code, and the CVRA. The problem is, if you go back, you are removing a minority district. You will be sued for racially polarizing. Yes, you will, because if you remove a district and you cannot prove to the court that it isn't a racial polarizing move, you will get sued, and we did get sued, and we paid $14 million for it. So I have a counter motion. Let's put together a citizen advisory committee to work with a CVRA consultant and a demographer to go down a legal path to explore whether we can create districts that aren't racially polarizing. If we can do that, and it fits those three things, then we can do something. But I think you might find, because of the challenge of the CVRA, there is no path back. And I'm not saying this because I want that to be the case. I never thought the previous council should have done what they did. Steve Hoffbauer won his last election with 44% of the vote. He was beatable, not when you run nine candidates at someone, they're not. So I never liked the decision to begin with, and since I've been on this council, I've asked to, let's look at the path of the way back. Because you can't just do things because you want to. When you start doing things because you want to, there are consequences, and this would be a big multimillion dollar consequence to get it wrong. So don't come here and demand, come in here and work with us.
My request was simply that we place it on the agenda for a discussion, and I believe that the proposal that is being made, I looked at it, is not calling for the elimination of any district. It would be the creation of a mayor at large, and that's the topic that I think was being addressed tonight. And that's something that I've asked for in the past, and I would request that we do that.
Your motion.
To just set it on the agenda for discussion. It's all I'm asking.
I'm asking for a step further. We're past discussion. Let's work with a consultant and a demographer, and let's draw to it.
With all due respect, Mr. Olson, I think that that just kicks the can down the road. We ought to get going on what we're going to do.
But all due respect, Mr. Loa, if we get going on what you want to get going, and this gets on a ballot, whether we do an ordinance or they get enough signatures, that conforms with our charter, that conforms with election code. We will go through the process, the voters will vote for it, we will implement it, and then the lawsuit appears and we're out $15 million. That is not financially responsible. Let's do it the financially responsible way to prevent the lawsuit in the first place that will undoubtedly come.
Councilmember Olson, before I consider which if either, I will second. Can I just get clarity? So Voting Rights Act and voting rights litigation is what I do for a living? So pretty familiar with it, what it does and how it works. But for clarity, you, you're suggesting we create a citizens oversight committee but retain an expert in racially polarized voting as well as a demographer?
Right.
To, to work with the citizens? Or, and how would those citizens be appointed? I just, I'm not sure, maybe if you could just talk through a little bit on what you think that the citizen role in this, because it's a very, very...
Yeah, I agree.
Would you have citizens from each district? How would, how would you pick the citizens to be on this committee?
The reason why I ask, one, I, you guys know that I'm a huge advocate of getting as much feedback from the community as possible. This is, we work for you, and so we want to hear your feedback. That's why I advocate for moving the citizen commission meetings to, to a time at 6:00 or 7:00 PM when working people can actually be on those commissions. Why I support moving our council meetings to, to different time other than 5:00 to afford people the opportunity to be here to participate. So I'm all for creating, getting citizen feedback on the electoral structure of this city, but I just, I'm not sure how those, the citizens are going to then take the expert analysis from both the demographer and the racially polarized voting expert. I've just, I, can you just explain a little bit?
I just want the citizens to be able to have a say throughout the process. Whatever looks like, I'm still open to figuring that out. I just want an open process where everyone can be involved so that everybody sees the gears churning and why decisions are being made the way that they are. I don't want to just go consult a, a demographer and an expert and then come back and say, he said no. I want to work through it, and I want as much input as possible, and I don't care what that looks like, but I, I want two things. Let's work through it. Let's figure out the legality. Let's head off a lawsuit before it happens. And two, let's engage the court and get a motion for declaratory relief. Let's, let's go back to the court, see what the judge says. Let's work with the demographer and the consultant and see what the paths are forward. But if you do an ordinance, whether you get signatures and that's what the people wants, I agree with them. What I care about is being responsible to the citizens of Palmdale, every citizen, and that means financially, because if we do it this way, we are setting ourselves up for a lot of trouble. No city that's ever gone to districts has ever gone back. There have been some that have explored it, but they have not done it. We would be the first, and I don't mind being the first, if we're right, if we know why, if we have intent, not just do it because we want it.
So I'm, I'm happy to second your motion to bring back the item added to the agenda on the potential establishment of a citizens oversight committee. We can vet that out when it's agendized exactly what that entails, but just to bring it back so that we can talk about it, I'd be happy to explore that. So second.
Thank you.
So are you, are you seconding Loa's motion or?
Councilmember Olson's.
Olson's motion.
Okay. So as I understand it, it's basically going to do what I'm asking for because it's going to be an open discussion on whatever approaches.
You are correct.
Because I, as I understand what you're saying, so let's have the discussions, let's put it on the agenda as soon as possible.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, so city manager, city attorney, so this will go on the agenda for discussion.
Bring it back.
All right, so let's go ahead and go through our council reports. Let's start with District 1.
I will keep it brief because we've got national night out happening outside. However, July 4th fireworks show at amphitheater, attended the sanitation districts, the transportation coalition, air quality, we had another council meeting, Neighborhood Watch at Ponsonon Square was out here on July 16th. I attended the summer concert Cool in the Gang and the Youth Mental Awareness Summer
My report is filed, mostly my transportation meetings that I've attended. I did get to represent the city in a workshop that Assemblymember Creo organized about the Joshua Tree. I kind of committed us to a conservation or a preserve of Joshua Trees, so I hope that that comes back at a future date because I learned a lot at that workshop. The Joshua Tree is a part of the city, it's a symbol of the city. We need to protect it, but we also need to do what we need to do to encourage growth. So that was exciting to figure out what all the potentials are. And other than that, I apologize for losing my cool bit. There's a, there's a way to do things, and I want to get us on the track of doing things properly. I care about this city, I do care about input, but let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I filed my report with a, with a city clerk, and that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Andrea?
Yeah, my report has been filed, but in terms of future and report back items, I originally asked, I want to say about a month ago, and my motion was seconded by councilmember Olson, approved by the council to have a report back on a motion that you spoke about very briefly to, to explore whether or not we can require the identification of federal agents that work within the jurisdiction of the city of Palmdale. There has been since, you gave us sort of brief report back sort of in passing, but it was never fully agendized. There has, as of late last week, there has been movement at the county board of supervisors, and they've now directed county council to develop their own ordinance that would require countywide that federal agents identify themselves within the county. So given all of these moving parts, I would like to, again, sort of revisit the matter and have it brought to our next council meeting. Not only the report back of sort of the full sort of series of, of most recent events, but also to maybe potentially agendize it for an action item. Do I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
No, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay, so if we can get that, that done? Thank you. All right, anything else, Andrea? All right, so I've filed my list of things that I've been to over the last month. Of, of interest was the League of California Cities Desert Mountain Division. They actually held it in Lancaster at the Museum of Art, and it was very interesting to see what the league is doing to support our local cities. They're doing a lot, a lot of talk about taxes, and is it the point of sale or the warehouse, and that type of thing. It's just nice to know that the League of Cities is really paying attention to all the new laws that are being passed and how things benefit our cities or don't. I would like to ask for, in the future, if we could have a, a meeting, Mr. City Manager, so we can talk about perhaps getting more grocery stores here for areas that don't have access. Also, I had asked the previous city manager if we could put a link on our city website showing when all the roads were going to be repaired, like you click on your street and it would have a proposed date of when your, would be repaved or resurfaced or patched, but that never got done. So I was just wondering if you could work with IT people and see if that's something that we're able to do? I'd appreciate it. Also, I'd like to reach out to the veteran organization that didn't receive funds. Is that person still here? I'd like to get the name of that group.
Me too.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'd like to know when they submitted their request, because I don't remember ever seeing a request. So if you could give me that information, we will certainly work on that, because we do support our veterans, the city council's very, very veteran centric.
It's crazy to say, everyone doesn't.
May, may I just interject real quick?
Sure.
On the veteran topic, we have spoken about, since it was one of the first things that I did on this council, and the full council supported it, we established the Emergency Needs Veterans Fund. It's been in existence, it's been in our budget ever since we were, Eric and I were elected, councilmember Olson and I were elected, but we haven't really been good as a city about advertising, about letting the veterans organizations know that it exists, how to access it, what it's for. So can we please, can I, if I can get a second, bring that back as a presentation item so that everybody understands for our next meeting what it is, what you, what, what you can use it for?
Are you applying?
And get, create a communications plan to talk to all the veterans organizations in the AV about how to access it.
I seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so back to my other.
I'll second all of yours as well.
Okay, great.
It was like which day, which time.
But it largely incorporated staff response. I think there were about 300 respondents, but there was a varied response.
I know that some people don't like getting out really late, and it keeps the public late, and if you're elderly or you have kids, you know, it makes it hard to come to a council meeting when you're here until 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night. So maybe we can do a compromise and make it at 6:00 o'clock or 6:30, if we can put that on a future agenda.
I'll second that one.
So we can have a conversation or maybe do a survey, I don't know how you want to handle it, but I think, I think that we need to make it more accessible to the public. And then the last thing I want to talk about is if you will please mark your calendars for September 18th at 6:00 PM at the Palmdale Playhouse, I will be having my town hall meeting. So if you're from District 3, or if you're anywhere in the city, please come by, say hello, share your experiences, your wants, your needs, your desires, and see what we can do to support you as a resident for our city. So again, that's September 18th, 6:00 PM, Palmdale Playhouse, it'll be nice and quiet and cool, and you'll be comfortable sitting there, so please, I hope that you will all come. There's nothing worse than throwing a party and nobody comes, so please be there. Anybody else have any comments to make? All right, so the last thing I want to do is I am going to be adjourning this meeting in honor of Vince Dino. He recently passed away, he was a very active community member, he served on the Palmdale Water Board for many years. He also sat on our city planning commission for a very long time. People don't know that he was an educator, he was a union worker for many, many years, and then when he retired, he started teaching prisoners how to do plumbing and construction, that type of thing. So when they get released, they can get jobs, and they can get good union jobs. He will be greatly missed. I want to thank Debbie Dino, his wife, for sharing him with us for so many years, all the good deeds that he has done for us. Without her support and his support, our city wouldn't be really where it is today. And I want to thank Debbie for her many years of service to our city. She was one of our hearing officers for many years, and she also is on the Elk Valley Fair Program Board. So our heart goes out to Debbie Dino for losing her husband Vincent Dino, and he will truly be missed. And with that, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting in his honor. So thank you all very much, good night.